COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04. Please note that in accordance with the governor's emergency order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda of the city Conqueror's website at conquerednh-ledgestar.com/calendar ASPX. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the city council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through clicking the following website address. If any member of the public does not have website access, they may dial the telephone number 1-929-205-6099. If the dialing from a landline, you may call toll-free at 877-853-5257. The webinar ID number is 81204172709. For those who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, and you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the hand raised icon in the attendee section and make the request. When the time is appropriate, you'll be recognized by me and can provide your testimony. Members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me to want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in Zoom for this meeting. Please note that testimony is only allowed for agenda items that have been scheduled for the public meeting, and public participation is not authorized for other items on the agenda. If anyone has a problem with accessing the meeting, please call 603-230-3718, or send an email to congresscitycouncilmeeting@gmail.com. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When you state your presence at the meeting, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which you're required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk, may you please call the roll?
Counselor Bouchard.
Present here, home alone.
Mayor Bulle.
Present in my office alone.
Counselor Champlin. He's joining us. Counselor Fantasy.
I am present. I am in a room in my house alone.
Counselor Champlin. Counselor Champlin.
I'm present. I am in a room in my house by myself.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
I am present in my home with my family.
Counselor Hatfield.
I am here in my home in a room by myself.
Counselor Keach.
I'm present at home by myself.
Counselor Kennison.
At home alone.
Counselor Kretovic.
With family.
Counselor Matson.
I'm home alone at the moment, although sometime later my son may be coming in back to the house.
Counselor Nian.
Present in my office alone.
Counselor Pierce.
Present at home alone.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Present alone in this room at home.
Counselor Todd.
Here at home alone in this room.
And Counselor Warner.
I am here at home with my family.
Great. Good to see everyone. If you could all unmute yourselves and join me in the pledge allegiance. Almost got the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
It's better every time. Thank you.
You're so kind.
So we have before us the minutes of March 8th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made. Second to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2021. Is there any, somebody had any changes, comments, suggestions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Bulle.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
With that, motion is adopted. We have our consent agenda before us this evening. One item has been removed. Item 18 is removed by Counsel Fantasy. With that removal, does anybody else have anything? Okay, seeing none, can we get a motion on the consent agenda excluding item 18?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. In discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Bulle.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the consent agenda is adopted. Takes us to our public hearings this evening. And with your approval, I would suggest that we hear item 28A and 28B together as they both deal with the same issue. Is that acceptable with anybody?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, if we could read item 28A and 28B, please?
This 28A is a resolution approving a purchase and sales agreement for acquisition of real estate located at 10 through 12 Higgins Place. 28B is a resolution appropriating the sum of $75,000 to support the acquisition of real estate located at 10 through 12 Higgins Place. CIP number 635 and authorizing the use of $75,000 in economic development reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, David Kelso is the owner of the real estate located here at 10 to 12 Higgins Place. It's .31 acres plus or minus. It largely consists of vacant land, but does feature small storage shed. The property is assessed at $59,000. It is located in our opportunity corridor. The parcel also bought existing city-owned property. You have maps and the public has maps to be able to see that. Mr. Kelso has offered to sell the property to the city for the sum of $59,000. Acquisition of their property would assist the city in achieving a long-term goal of redeveloping the opportunity corridor. The purchases and sales agreement, which you have is part of the report, has been executed by the seller and myself. The agreement is specifically contingent upon city council approval and appropriation of funds. The agreement includes the city's normal and customary terms for the transactions. The closing is scheduled per honor before June 30 of this year and is expressly subject to the results of the city's title and environmental due diligence. Total budget for the transaction is $75,000. Really, the additional costs is related to due diligence. The city administration recommends that this appropriation be financed by the Economic Development Reserve Fund. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none then, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on either item 28A or 28B. Is there anyone wishing to testify? I have no one raising their hands. Mr. Manager, do you have anybody on the phone?
No, your honor.
Okay, well then with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read item 28C, please?
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $130,000 to offset personnel costs for the police department to assign an officer to the drug task force and accepting the sum of $130,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Justice Attorney General's Drug Task Force for this purpose.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
Members of the council, over the last year, the police department and the command staff from the Hampshire Attorney General's Drug Task Force has engaged in discussions regarding the assignment of Concord Police Staff to the task force. This arrangement serves as a force multiplier for the department in efforts to combating legal drug activity in the community and also allows for extensive investigative resources available through the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office. The department is committed to engaging an aggressive approach to addressing legal drug activity in the city and has worked collaboratively with the Drug Task Force and will be done with the most effective means possible accomplishing this would be this process. Through the Attorney General's Office, beginning in July of 2020, the grant award, the amount of $2,000, is provided to offset personal costs for the police department assigning a member to the task force through June of this year. Additional funding of $130,000 has been approved, and this will take us from, if you approve it, from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023. So over two fiscal years. It is recommended that you accept and appropriate these funds and we move forward with this continued relationship. Glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Manager, anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is anyone wishing to testify? Okay, it appears that no one has their hands raised to testify. Mr. Manager, do you have anybody on the phone?
No, your honor.
Okay, well at this time then we'll close the public hearing on item 28C. And that takes us to our public hearing action phase. Madam Clerk, item 29, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Interchange Development LLC concerning CIP number 30, Hoyt Road Whitney Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Thank you very much, Mr... Since we had the hearing a month ago, Mr. Manager, would you just mind giving us a 20-second recap?
Actually, Mr. Walsh has some comments that he would like to make related to some of the questions that were received. Just briefly, would you like to approach it that way or?
That's fine. Let's do that. Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. So correct, you finished your public hearings on these items last month. Tonight is action only. No additional public testimony. Essentially, what you'll be voting on this evening is the development agreement between Interchange Development LLC and the City of Concord concerning public-private partnership relative to CIP 30, which is the Hoyt Road Whitney Road intersection and their development on 43 acres on Whitney Road related there too, accepting a corporate guarantee from Market Basket related to that project, guaranteeing that they'll build a grocery store within two years of moving forward with this project. Items related to expansion of the Pennacook Village Tax and Finance District, including amending the development program and financing plan and appropriating the sum of 400, I'm sorry, $4,780,000 related there too, of which 4.33 million will come from the city directly. You'll be accepting funds from the developer for $450,000. During the public hearing, there were some comments and questions that were raised that we felt it was appropriate to provide some information to the city council. And if you like, your honor, I can just march on through that if you're comfortable with that. So the first one is there was a request from the Merrimack Valley School District in a letter requesting that the city engage in a dialogue releasing a portion of the tax increment finance districts captured, assessed value and tax revenue associated with the interchange project. And I wanted to point out that in accordance with RSA 162K9 Roman III, the city may, but doesn't have an obligation to enter into any type of agreement with the school district, whether it's Merrimack Valley or Concord School District, if the Concord School District applied, or Merrimack County itself for that matter, regarding captured revenues by the TIF district. And as the council knows, we've been doing tax increment finance districts since 1979. That's when the statute was actually created in New Hampshire. So we've been doing this for the better part of four decades or more. And we've had five different TIF districts in that time. So Eagle Square was a TIF district, Capitol Plaza, where the Durgan Block, now School Street Garage is located, that was a TIF district, as well as the Sears Block, TIF district, and the Octave District, TIF district in Pennacook. We have never entered into any agreements with the school districts regarding how we capture the revenue and what we use it for to facilitate infrastructure improvements and maintenance of those improvements for economic development projects, nor have we ever done it with Merrimack County. So what they're requesting is Merrimack Valley School District's requesting would create a precedent. We'd be concerned about doing that at this time. We've had a good track record with how we've structured our TIF districts. We would intend to operate Pennacook Village TIF just like the New Octave District, which is the North End Opportunity Corridor TIF district, whereby we capture all of the incremental property tax revenues generated by new development within the district to finance the debt service on the infrastructure improvements we're going to make, which in this case is CIP 30, the Hoyt Road Whitney Road intersection. And over time, as the TIF matures and more development happens in the district, we start to release captured assessed value and incremental property tax revenues to the school district, as well as the county, as well as the city, as well as the state of New Hampshire. That model's worked well for us and it mitigates any risk to the city's taxpayers about having to pick up the cost of debt service or operating expenses for the TIF district if there's an economic downturn, downturn, excuse me. So we want to make sure that the TIF has a chance to mature, that the fund balance grows, that the fund balance has a chance to get to the place where it can weather an economic downturn if one happens, similar to, you know, a future COVID event or something like that might happen. And it also gets the fund balance to a point where it can help support future investments in the district that set forth in the capital improvement program. I would also point out that the TIF's development program and financing plan does include provisions to allow us to entertain entering into an agreement with the Merrimack Valley School District, and it also creates a mechanism for that in section 5.6 of that document. So that's very important. And section 6.8 also talks about why we capture all the revenue in the TIF from new development for the reasons I just described, because it's in the best long-term interest of the community. So that was part one. Part two was there was some question about, if you want me to stop, your honor, just let me know.
No, please keep going.
Okay. Part two was there was a discussion about whether or not this is a good arrangement for the city. There's folks with various different opinions on how this could all be structured. In the city administration's opinion, yes, this is a great project for the city. First and foremost, it improves an intersection that is in need of improvement that we've been trying to get the state of New Hampshire to improve since 2004. And the state has made the decision not to step up and do that in their state transportation plan. So because the state has not acted, the city must act if we want to improve the safety condition there, but also facilitate economic development on the Whitney Road corridor. Without this intersection improvement, no development would happen on Whitney Road ever because the intersection is basically in failure and can't take more traffic coming out of Whitney Road. So all that vacant land on Whitney Road remains vacant. So safety improvements facilitates the economic development of that area, which of course will create short and long-term benefits for the city. The short-term benefits are job creation, permit revenues, increased livability for that section of Concord. You're closer to a grocery store, improved quality of life. It probably makes property in Pennacook more desirable because you have more convenient access to these types of services. And in the long term, of course, once the TIF matures and we can release value, there's a long-term tax benefit to the community in the Merrimack Valley School District as well. Project in Phase 1 will create about $9.24 million of new assessed value. The revenues on that are $293,000, 438 jobs. Very important. And the level of investment the city's making here is generally consistent with other investments made in other projects throughout the city over the last 40 years to facilitate economic development projects. Moving along, there's been some suggested alternative structures for how the TIF could be put together. The staff took a look at some of those recommendations. Basically, the upshot was the community had suggested, some members of the community had suggested only capturing a portion of the tax revenues that are going to accrue to the TIF to pay for the debt service and the operating expenses of this improvement. Unfortunately, those proposals are not economically viable. We ran a couple of performance to check on them to see if they would work. The takeaway there, besides it doesn't work, is when you don't capture all of the tax revenues that the new development creates, it limits how much investment you can put in because the TIF can only support so much debt service. So for example, if we were only going to capture the city's portion, the county's portion, and the state's portion of the tax rate, that means we can only support debt of about $2.43 million when the TIF actually needs, where the total debt that we need for this project is about $4.24 million. So we're short by about 1.8 billion. That would have to be made up somewhere else. So that is the underlying challenge here when you don't capture all of the new incremental property tax revenues to support the debt service and the operating expenses. There's also a suggestion that we extend our debt service out on that 4.24 million. And if we were going to do that, specifically the 20-year construction bond, which is about $3.8 million, that's going to result in about $400,000 more of interest costs to the community. So doing that actually costs the community more, would cause the TIF to run longer, you know, to about the year 2052. And it's not consistent with the city's current financial strategy on how we do debts. And we've never done a 30-year bond for anything, as far as I'm aware, certainly not for a TIF project. There are also suggestions that we simply use the city's general fund to pay for this $4.24 million in debt. The first year and operating expenses, the first year of the debt and the operating expenses are about $377,000. If we were going to do that, essentially what the upshot is, is the city's tax rate would go up about six cents, which is about 0.64%. So the city's tax rate would go up from about 932 to about 938,000. The overall tax rate for Merrimack Valley School The overall tax rate for Merrimack Valley School District, so when you sugar that new assessed value down through and do those calculations, the overall rate for the Merrimack Valley School District, all in, which is the city, the county, the school district, and state of New Hampshire, would decrease from about $29.93 to about $29.60, so call it 33 cents. It's about 1.12%. And to a $250,000 home, that is a savings of about $84 a year. That's what that number is. However, if you're not in the Merrimack Valley School District, if you're located in the other wards throughout the city that are not part of Merrimack Valley School District, your taxes would go up. And overall, the tax rate would increase for the rest of the city from $26.76 to about $26.81, it's about 5 cents a thousand. But it would result in an increase of about $13.15 a year to a home that is not located in the Merrimack Valley School District. So, just wanted to present that information. I know it was something everybody was interested in. I've already mentioned, our strategy again will be to be consistent with how we've operated TIFs in the past. We will release surplus incremental value from the Pennacook Village TIF district to support the Merrimack Valley School District tax rate, but also the cities and the county and the state of New Hampshire once the TIF matures and there's a sufficient amount of fund balance to make sure we have a cushion there and can afford future projects. We have done this in the North End Opportunity Corridor TIF district since 2006. So, we have a track record of doing this when a TIF district becomes mature. And in fact, in that district, the Neoctave District is what we call it, we've released about $9.5 million total over the last 14 or 15 years. So, the city does do that, and we have aspirations to do that in Pennacook, as well as the Sears Block TIF district, which is another one located in downtown. The last point that was raised by the public, Your Honor, was a question about the Riverfront Park at Pennacook Landing. There was an assertion made by the public that TIF has never been used to develop the park. That assertion was incorrect. In fact, Eagle Square, which was the first TIF district in the city, was developed or created specifically to develop Eagle Square. I think everybody in the community understands where that is in downtown and the benefit it's been to the community back in 1981. We also use TIF funds as part of, in the Sears Block TIF district, to develop the plaza that is near O's Steak and Seafood and Red River Theater and Vibes Burgers that was developed with TIF funds. And we also developed the Small Pocket Park on the corner of Store Street and Pleasant Street Extension, next to the old Lighting Place Building with TIF funds as well. I would note that there was discussion about what the cost of that park will be at Pennacook Landing. And my answer would be, you know, right now, we have a budget number in the CIP of about $1.35 million. We haven't designed the park yet. That was based on a very preliminary early concept that was done five or six years ago now. And obviously, the exact program and cost of the park will be decided by the community. We intend to work with the community on designing that park and figuring out what the community exactly wants, what that will cost, and then obviously with the City Council on paying for it. We are exploring different ways of paying for it. And for example, we are looking at potentially using the parking fund to support reconstruction of the Canal Street parking lot, which is next to the park. We're also considering land and water conservation fund grants, as well as recreational impact fees. And if all those came together and we still had a $1.35 million price, we anticipate that the TIF share would drop from $1,275,000 to about $775,000. And with that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I think you hopefully have answered most everything. But who has questions for you, the manager or Mr. Walsh? Counsel Hatfield?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, Mr. Walsh. Really appreciate it. I think you said that the Merrimack Valley School District requested a meeting or to talk with the city about a different approach. Did we meet with them, or can you just talk about what our response was?
We have not met with them. We did communicate through a series of emails with the superintendent and some members of the school board about what the documents before the City Council said, kind of how we've approached TIF districts in the past and how we haven't released value or done any special arrangements for the Concord Union School District, for example, which has had four TIF districts in it since 1979. So, we have had that conversation. We anticipate going forward that the manager and I would probably craft a response to the Merrimack Valley School District, further explaining whatever action the City Council takes tonight. And should the council approve it, really drive home to them that the TIF documents do contemplate releasing value. There's language in there talking about releasing value, just that we need to have them understand what our approach is and not prematurely releasing value, which might cause the TIF to become insolvent and require a subsidy from the general fund, which would frankly undermine the whole purpose of doing the TIF. So, we anticipate communicating with them about that more, but we haven't had any meetings with them prior to tonight's discussion.
Thank you. May I follow up?
Please.
Did their requests come after the public hearing that we had last month?
Formally, the letter I have in front of me, Counselor, is dated March 5, 2021. So, I believe that was prior to your public hearing. And I would have to ask the clerk to confirm, but I believe it was included in your materials.
Thank you. Just one last question. So, I mean, another way to get at this is for someone else to take on debt so that the city doesn't have to finance the entire project. Would that be right?
I guess, you know, the total cost of the project is $4,780,000. The TIF share of it is $4,240,000. So, the rest of it's coming from either impact fees or the developer's contribution for the improvements that are located in Canterbury. And you're right, if we don't use the TIF, then somebody else or some other way or some other form of public financing has to come up with the $4.24 million. And the only way we see that happening is if, you know, basically the general fund picks up that cost.
Just one more, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Does it necessarily have to be public funding, though? Couldn't the developer put more money into the project to reduce the public borrowing?
I suppose you could ask the developer if they wanted to put more money into it and if they could afford to do that. However, you know, obviously, the developer has expenses that they are incurring and have incurred for this project for a long time. And I don't know whether or not they have the capacity to provide more funds to the project within that context.
Thank you.
Counsel Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Matt, thank you very much. I know you and I have worked on this, and you've answered all my questions very well. I certainly appreciate it. I appreciate you taking the time to look at the alternative funding sources. So, a couple of points that you made. When you look at using just the city portion of taxes to pay back the TIF and you lengthen the time, could you also say the longer the payoff of the TIF takes, the longer it will take to realize the full benefit of the TIF? Is that really what you're saying?
I think that's a fair way of saying it. So, the TIF exists as set forth in our documents until two things happen. One, the purposes for which the TIF was created are fulfilled. And two, all the debt service is repaid. So, if we extend out the construction debt, for example, from 20 to 30 years, then yes, that's going to delay. And nothing else happens in the district or development, future development is slow. Yes, that would cause the district to run longer, and it would deprive the community of being able to receive those financial benefits from tax revenues associated with the new development. So, yes.
Good, thank you. And just one final comment. I want to thank you for mentioning the status of the current intersection. That's something that a lot of folks don't realize, and I had forgotten until you said it again, that regardless of what is done by interchange and at that intersection, we're going to have to do something about the safety at Whitney Road and Route 4. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Counsel Fennessey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, Matt. My understanding is that what we're proposing to do tonight would just extend the TIF to include the area where the park's located. But we're not taking any action at this point to appropriate any money towards that. Am I understanding that correctly?
You're correct, Counsel Fennessey. So, the Riverfront Park property is already in the TIF district. We're expanding the geography of the TIF to include Exit 13. But the park itself is part of the former Allied Leather Tannery site. It's part of the district today. We're simply updating the development program and financing plan to include the contemplation of building the park there and what those expenditures will look like, both for debt and for operating costs. But you're not appropriating any funds tonight for the park. That would be handled in future budgets. Tonight, the only thing you're talking about relative to appropriations is the $4,780,000 for the Hoyt Road-Witney Road intersection improvement.
In case anybody mishears it, I think you meant to say Exit 17, not Exit 13.
Oh, correct. Yes, Exit 17, my bad.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Walsh or Mr. Manager? Okay, seeing none, questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I move approval, Your Honor.
Second? Counsel Todd moves approval, seconded by Counsel Fennessey. We have motions made, seconded. Any further discussion? We're ready for the question. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard? Counsel Bouchard?
It looks like she's having some problems with the audio.
I'll come back to her. Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennesaw?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Nian?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
And then for the record, I think Counsel Bouchard was doing a thumbs up.
Counsel Bouchard, if you want to vote yes, can you give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Does everybody recognize a thumbs up?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
With that, then the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, that takes us to item 30, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a corporate guarantee from Jamula Supermarkets Incorporated concerning construction of a grocery store at property located on Whitney Road.
Everyone?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
You can make her go last. That'd be great.
Okay. Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennesaw?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Nian?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Warner?
Yes.
And Counsel Bouchard?
We're going to put Counsel Bouchard down as a non-vote or not voting due to technical difficulties. And with that, the motion is adopted. Item 30 is approved. Madam Clerk, item 31, please.
It's a resolution adopting an amended and restated development program and finance plan for the Pennacook Village Tax and Increment Finance District.
Move approval. She made and seconded to approve item 31. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennesaw?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Nian?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Counsel Bouchard, we are voting on number 31. Perfect, thank you.
Counsel Bouchard signals as voting yes. And with that, the motion is adopted. Item 32, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
She made and seconded to approve item 32. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennesaw?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Nian?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Now, there was a revised resolution with that item two, which was what you voted on.
Correct. I think Counsel Bouchard's back.
I am.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, the motion is approved. We have received the necessary two-thirds. Item 33, please.
The resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a maintenance agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation concerning certain infrastructure improvements associated with CIP Number 30, Hoyt-Royd-Witney Road Intersection Improvement Project, located within the U.S. Route 4 right-of-way.
Move approval.
Second.
She made and seconded to approve this item. Counsel Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. The members of the council all received a communication from Mr. Baker with regards to bicycle access and multimodal access at this intersection. You know, for historical purposes, when, you know, T-PAC started some 13, 14 years ago, this intersection sat on one of their improvements for the overall city. And we knew even at that time that the state was rarely going to participate in this, and it's always been an opportunity for improvement. I do believe, and Mr. City Manager perhaps who can confirm, this intersection with the roundabout is going to have some access for bicycles as well, even though it is a higher-speed road. Is that correct? Or City Manager, Deputy City Manager Baia, can you raise your hand, someone?
Your Honor, members of the council, that is correct. We're actually going to have sort of a multipurpose trail that's going to go around the entire roundabout. There will also be beacons there for pedestrians, obviously sidewalks as well that'll be maintained throughout the year. So, this area will be much more accessible. It's night and day when this thing gets built compared to what it is today.
I appreciate the confirmation on that. Secondary to that, we have the Merrimack River Greenway, I can't speak, sorry. And we've all been working on different parts of that trail throughout the city. But there is a really important section here along Whitney Road that as this development continues down back towards the Concord Monitor, there are expected improvements towards that connection between Soul Falls Road as well as Whitney Road that include this multimodal piece. You know, the longer goal of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail is essentially from Bow to Bosquin. So, I just want to make sure that as the public, they understand and know that we are very forward-thinking in this and have been for the last 17 years to get these in place for these improvements. very forward-thinking in this and have been for the last seventeen years to get these um, in place for these improvements for all of us. And that while we make progress slowly, we do make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Hatfield, did you have your hand raised?
I did. Thank you. Um, Counsel Kretovic uh, did a great job raising the issue that I wanted to. I, I just had one brief follow-up um, for the Deputy City Manager. Uh, do I understand correctly that because of the change to the intersection and because um, of how it's well, in the multi-use trail, that actually the speeds would be lower after the project in this area?
You're referring to the speeds of the vehicles?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Uh, that is correct because as you approach the roundabout, you're automatically, not automatically, but you're it, the way it's built, the infrastructure conveys the impression that you need to slow down, which you, you do to make your way around. Uh, versus today, today there's, it's just basically a hill. You're coming downhill, you're picking up a head of steam. Or alternatively, if you're going eastbound towards the, the highway, you're looking straight at ninety-three because you want to get southbound. And you're accelerating. By the time you get onto ninety-three, you're probably going sixty-five to seventy miles an hour. Whereas the improvement, in addition to the roundabout, it's, it's important to remember, it also makes a change to the on-ramp onto ninety-three, making that on-ramp much more of an acute curve than it is today. It's slowing traffic down to a much more reasonable speed that will make that area safer as well.
Thank you.
Okay. You know what else stands? Uh, we do, we do have a motion before us, I believe?
No, this is better. Really?
Counselor Keach, if you uh, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, that'd be great. Um, okay, so with that, um, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Um, Madam Clerk, next item, item thirty-four, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the annual appraisal of real estate at market value for RSA seventy-five eight dash B.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, for this item, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Um, Madam Clerk, item thirty-five, please.
It's a resolution approving a purchase and sales agreement for acquisition of real estate located at ten dash twelve Higgins Place.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve item thirty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Uh, Madam Clerk, item thirty-six, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to support the acquisition of real estate located at ten through twelve Higgins Place, CIP number six thirty-five, and authorizing the use of seventy-five thousand dollars in economic development reserve funds for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll again?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, have received an S R two-thirds, motion is adopted. Um, Madam Clerk, item thirty-seven, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to offset personnel costs for the police department to assign an officer to the drug task force and accepting the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice Attorney General's Drug Task Force for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, have we received an S R two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, do you need a rest?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, takes us to new business. Um, item thirty-eight, please.
It's a report from the city manager together with a request from In-Town Concord for dispersment of fiscal year twenty twenty-one appropriated funds.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Manager, we do have your memo, but would you like to just share a few words or should we just?
Yeah, just briefly. So um, Jessica Martin, who's the Executive Director for In-Town, provided the request for the, the funds that were appropriated as part of twenty twenty-one, which the council wanted to hold until they had a better understanding of how those dollars would be used, which you appropriated. And um, I've also included that report, um, the original application um, of what, or portion of the original application of what they suggested. That was before Jessica Martin got there. Before what they uh, wanted to use the dollars on. And of course, that was all being put together um, uh, as COVID was uh, unfolding. So um, the, the request in front of you tonight is for the release of the um, the thirty thou- release is a strong word, but the release of the thirty thousand dollars that you have appropriated uh, uh, as part of the budget i- in June of last year.
Okay, thank you. Um, what is the pleasure of the council?
Hey, I have a question.
Uh, Council Nine.
Thank you. Uh, could we get clarification as to, obviously this past year, the, the various activities didn't occur. Do we know what these funds are going to be used for?
Mr. Manager?
Um, I, I don't have that information, but Jessica Martin is in the um, attendee grouping, if you'd like to uh, hear from her directly. Um, or, or not.
Do you want to bring her in or uh, do we have other questions perhaps or? Okay, why don't you, why don't you invite her in and uh, perhaps we can repeat Council Nine's questions, she can answer that. Good evening, Ms. Martin, how are you? Ms. Martin, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Hey, welcome. Welcome to Congress City Council. Uh, did you hear Council Nine's questions?
Um, could you ask it again? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear all of it.
Absolutely. Council Nine?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Um, um, thank you, Jessica, for answering my, or handling my question, which was um, obviously, there was a report that came forward requesting some, uh, the allocation of, or the dispersment of funds. Um, the majority of the fiscal year has expired, and I'm wondering what these funds are intended to be used for.
So our, so your fiscal year is different than our fiscal year. So we run on a calendar year. So um, if, if I'm understanding correctly, Tom, what we're talking about today is the funds that were approved from twenty to twenty-one?
From, from July, um, tw- July one, uh, twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Right. So those funds were technically approved but not released yet. So it's a retroactive situation right now, right?
That's, that's correct.
Council Nine, did you have anything further?
I, I guess I'm still looking for an understanding of what the funds are going to be expended on. Is this salaries, is it projects? I, I just don't, I just like a, a better understanding of what that money would be spent on.
So our, um, when we write the grant for the city, the majority of it is for the events that, the large community events that we do for the downtown area. That's the majority of what the funds are used towards. Um, we also have the facade program that we um, that there's a certain amount that goes to, but the majority of it is for our large events, market days being the most well-known, obviously.
Right. So are, are these funds intended to be used towards the market days this upcoming year?
So the, the twenty, so for us, yes, that's how it works in our budgeting. But for you guys, you approved it la- last year. So this, this, what's going to be approved now is going towards this year. What's approved next year will go to the following year for the way our budget works.
And again, when are market days again this year?
Uh, August nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first.
So wouldn't those be dollars that you'd be requesting in the upcoming budget cycle?
No, because in, eh, eh, Tom, if I'm not, I might be wrong on this, but usually when we get our, our grant money, it's after market days, right?
Mr. Manager?
We provide, right, we provide the, the dollars. Uh, market day's been moved to June. It used to be in August. Uh, now it's being uh, moved back to August because of COVID. So, but the dollars, the council's always, um, we, we go by our fiscal year. You, how you use your fiscal year is, is your business.
Right, right, right.
So, right, so the dollars that were appropriated for this past year by city council were for this past either way, there's, there's a market days that did not occur.
Right.
Midnight Mary meant that really did not occur. It was, it, it, it had an incarnation of something else. There was a Halloween Howl that did not occur. So there's a gap in there. That, that's what Counselor Nine is trying to get, get at.
Yes, yes. So instead of that, we did uh, a market month. Um, and there was a report of all of the things that we did in, in instead of what had normally taken place because of COVID.
Okay. Um, Council Nine, are you all set?
Um, yes.
Okay. We have several other people, their hands raised. Uh, we'll start with uh, Council Pierce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, fiscal years aside, if when we go through the budget for twenty next year's budget for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and assuming we have another grant request from In-Town Concord, that money, if, if it is in fact approved and granted to In-Town Concord, that will go to them after the first event. Uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the timing because at, at the end of the day here, what I would like to do is I would like to take some of this money and put it toward the parking fund for what we've been doing as a city in um, putting uh, closing off parking spots for restaurants to somehow replenish that fund. Um, and I'm not sure how to do that. If, or if this is the right time to do it.
Is that, well, why don't, since we have uh, Ms. Martin with us, why don't we use this time to um, ask questions? And then we can come back and revisit those kinds. So is anyone else have further questions for the director? Um, Counsel Hatfield.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Martin, what's the overall annual budget for In-Town Concord?
The, I apologize. I, I, so I just started in December, so I can um, pull that up if you can hold on for two seconds. Um, geez.
And while you're doing that, it's, I have a two-part question. I'm also just curious about your other sources of funds other than the grant that you typically get from the city.
Um, so our other sources of funds include um, business supporters, corporate supporters. Um, so basically, the supporters that are, the majority of our supporters are small downtown businesses. We also have some corporate supporters that pay annual dues, if you will. For lack of a better term. Um, each of our events, we get sponsors for um, as well. And I'm trying to think what else. Um, we have large, we have um, some of our events, so help offset, so like our upstairs uh, downtown event that offsets itself. And also the money goes towards our facade grant program too. So um, that's kind of in a nutshell what it is. Okay, I'm sorry, I've got it pulled up here. Okay. Um, um, so our annual budget is two hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Thank you. And, and if the city um, didn't make this dispersment, would, are there events that you would not be able to do between now and the city, the beginning of the city's next fiscal year?
The, we have budgeted for the thirty, thirty thousand dollars from the city. So to answer your question, yeah, that would, that would be a hardship for us.
Thank you.
But Ms. Martin, the money you budgeted is the money that you'd be applying for in the, the June uh, city budget, is that correct?
We So your, your fiscal year is a little bit hard for me because it, ours overlaps. Um, so to answer your question, the fif- the thirty thousand dollars that we applied for, you would approve that when? In June?
Ideally, yes.
Okay. Um, so my understanding is that money hasn't gone to us until the fall, falling year before the end of the fiscal year, right?
Okay. I, I think I know where you're going. Um, Counsel Nine, Counsel Kretovic, do either one of you have questions for Ms. Martin?
Uh, yes, Your Honor.
Counsel Nine?
I, I apologize if I'm missing something here. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of where the dollars are going. And at the risk of, of repeating myself, it sounds as though, I understand we have different fiscal years. It sounds as though In-Town Concord uh, works on a calendar year basis and, and, and we have a a traditional, you know, June to, I'm sorry, July to June fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
And if I understand what you're saying is for your calendar year two thousand twenty, that you were planning on the city releasing the thirty thousand dollars to cover events that occurred in two thousand twenty? In that the dollars that you would apply for and use for events that occur in two thousand twenty-one would be appropriated or, or approved in the council budget this upcoming, uh, you know, you know, May timeframe. And if that's correct, my line of questioning was really driving at is if those events did not occur in twenty twenty. what's the money being spent on?
There was a report that was provided to the city uh before this meeting that went over what we what the what we did throughout twenty twenty and up until now. So we haven't gotten those funds, so I can't tell you what they were spent on, but there was, they were included in our budget last year. So we haven't received them, but because we haven't received them, they haven't been spent. But that's what we have done in response to the grant that we submitted last year to the city.
Are 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 the monies being used for salaries?
The money from the city goes towards the events that are listed in the grant.
Okay, further questions? Uh, we're gonna start, uh, council credit record and then council champion.
Your Honor, um, Ms. Martin, I want to first acknowledge that you've never had an opportunity to speak in front of the council, and we can be in a term intimidating group of people, so I apologize for that. What I'm understanding is that typically, we receive a grant application from your organization, and we received that last March. And in that grant application was funding for market days, Halloween Howl, Midnight Merriment, et cetera. And a good portion of that was um reimbursement to our police department that you need to have for special forces during market days in particular. There's an there's an actual expense to your organization. Because of COVID nineteen, last year, you didn't um hold these events. And the supplemental report that you provided for us, essentially what you're saying is, you know, we didn't do those events
Right.
because of COVID, but we did do, we still did the facade improvement program or the facade grant program, and it costs seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we did a market month, we did the Great Pumpkin Hunt, we did things for the community that in uh included social distancing, wearing masks, et cetera. Because of the events that you typically do, like market days, where you have a large number of people that are paying to participate in that event, it is one of your largest fundraisers.
Right.
So the request that you have in front of the city this evening, correct me if I'm wrong, is to reimburse the organization for the events you did run during the pandemic versus the ones that you had presented in a grant application last year. And that it's the intention of the organization to submit another grant for this coming year's market days.
Right.
And those other event expenses. Would that be correct?
Yes, you said it much better than I did, clearly. Thank you.
More time in front of the council, it's the only reason why.
I appreciate that. Um, yes, that is correct, and um I I do understand what, to your point about the police presence, I do understand that that is um a significant expense that um I've had a meeting with with um city manager to to um get a better understanding of that. So I do understand that that cost was not experienced by In-Town Concord, so um, to your point.
Um, council champion.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Council Kretovic, for kind of going in a direction that that I was intending to go in. Uh, Ms. Martin, welcome, welcome to your your first uh uh time before the council. We are more warm and fuzzy than sometimes we appear, particularly through Zoom. Um, I'm looking at the report that you provided to the city, which was included in our packet for tonight's meeting. Um, and uh I noticed the many of the things that councillor Kretovic just outlined. Um, uh, and my understanding from my years on city council is that the council perspective is that our grant to In-Town Concord is intended as a stimulus to, excuse me, downtown events uh in a way of supporting activities that uh that generate uh foot traffic and economic activity for the downtown area. Uh, so um as I look at your uh at your uh list of accomplishments for fiscal year twenty-one, um, uh, and I will just include in that, you know, uh, well, that's our fiscal year twenty-one, um, that you did do some uh events or some modified events. Uh, you uh uh instead of market days, as council Kretovic indicated, you did uh or you put on a market month uh trying to promote more shopping downtown. Uh, you uh uh in 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 lieu of Halloween Howl, you did the uh Great Pumpkin Hunt. Um, you encouraged downtown uh shopping during the holiday season in lieu of Midnight Merriment on the first Friday of the month. And you also uh put on uh the Winter Fest uh downtown, uh, which uh which actually was an event, did draw a number of people downtown. Um, is all of what I've said accurate?
That is accurate, too, and I actually just recently sent um the city manager an an update. Um, and since I've sent that, we had um an event we were calling Fall of the Bunny last Saturday. Um, brought about three hundred people, that families downtown hopping from business to business. Um, we teamed up with the chamber and also the city and did a large promotional campaign for outdoor dining. Um, and we have um announced that we are doing market days this um this August. So
Right.
um, those are kind of the updates of where we're at.
Super, thank, yeah, thank, thank you for that. So um, excuse me, I I I think that that uh it's it's possible that that my my colleagues and I, you know, feel that there's sort of a quid pro quo here, that there's, you know, the funding is provided in order to have events, and a lot of the events either didn't happen or were of a significantly different complexion. In the event that the that the majority of the council, you know, looks at at the the map, and obviously, you're new. Um, and none of us could control, none of us anticipated what happened in the last twelve months. Um, but uh, you know, if, for example, the members of the city council felt that, well, not all the events that we were uh thought we were going to be uh supporting uh occurred or did not occur in the way uh signi- in a significantly uh reduced uh uh fashion. Um, and maybe if the members of the council are not comfortable saying, well, you know, yes, we should, we should uh uh release the uh the the thirty thousand dollars, would it be fair to prorate uh that grant uh in some fashion in your mind? Uh, and perhaps uh grant a a lesser amount that was more in line with the events that actually took place?
Yes, and actually, I was um I was thinking um after I had a conversation with Tom. Um, if part of what you're approving is really earmarked for the to to cover the cost for the police presence or the expenses that the city um that we in incur because of, you know, fees for the city, I would think that it would be fair to remove that cost off of the grant altogether. Um, and the rest of it, I feel we did achieve, given the circumstances, as far as driving people to the downtown, promoting small businesses, shop local. Um, given the circumstances, I think we did um a good job with what we had to work with.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, councillor Rice Hopkins, did you have a question or more comment to?
I had a question. I think councillor Kretovic and councillor Champlin covered most of mine. I was curious if there was an overall change in your fiscal year budget?
If there was an overall change in our fiscal year budget, how how relating to what? I'm sorry.
Um, so without doing the activities and just with the changes um due to COVID overall, if you if you felt comfortable sharing the fluctuation in any kind of income you had um or overall expenses?
We were um eligible for PPP, so we received that, so there wasn't um there wasn't anything too too severe to report, I guess, is where I'm.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hatfield.
Thank you. Um, following up on, I believe it was councillor Champlin's question and your response about possibly taking out the city fees, would that be the twelve thousand amount that you refer, that is shown in your grant request? Or or we, did you have a different amount in mind?
No, I think Tom, our city manager, Tom, I think um that is what you've confirmed for us, that 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 is the cost for the city fees, correct?
It it range, Jessica, it ranges generally between about ten and twelve thousand.
So to answer your question, councillor Hatfield, yes.
So so councillor Hatfield, um originally, we used to do twenty thousand dollars in town Concord, and then we increased to thirty thousand to cover the, basically pay ourselves for the police. So it's generally, I think, a ten when we do that. I I see the great, you're absolutely right, the request was for twelve, but typically, I think it was ten. Um, councillor Kretovic.
Your Honor, um, Ms. Martin, I just want to make sure that you clarify your PPE loan was probably for salary replacement as well as business costs and not event costs.
Correct, that is correct. Thank you for that, yes.
Seeing no further questions, uh, Ms. Martin, uh, as everyone else has said, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, look forward to working with you, and thank you for um for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, council, uh, what is your pleasure?
Your Honor, I I, I'm sorry.
Council Nine?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would move that the council uh appropriate or otherwise release twenty thousand of the thirty thousand dollar funds um to cover event costs incurred.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion, and it has been due the second. Um, any thoughts, comments? Councillor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Does uh councillor Pierce want to add an amendment? Or do you want to do that at another time? Well, your friend.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I, if uh the council is so inclined, I would like to see five thousand dollars going toward the uh replenishment of the parking fund to offset the cost of free parking for restaurant expansion, seating expansion. So whether that be a separate motion, um.
Why don't why don't I take that as a separate motion?
Okay.
Fair enough. Um, councillor Hatfield.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank um Jessica and In-Town Concord. I I do think that they have done a great job, really trying to make the best of of what is possible or what has been possible during COVID. Um, and I think that uh the fact that the city funding is a pretty small percentage of their budget really does show the local support uh for the organization. So um, that's why I'm supporting this motion. So thank you, councillor Nyan, for making it.
Uh, councillor champion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I uh I also wanted to thank councillor Nyan for making the uh the motion. I think it's it's an equitable uh uh response to the request from In-Town Concord, and and I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else? Okay, ready for the question? This is on the amendments to um reduce the appropriation from thirty to twenty thousand dollars, release those funds. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Yes, councillor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Councillor Champlin.
Yes.
Councillor Fennessey.
Yes.
Councillor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Councillor Hatfield.
Yes.
Councillor Keach.
Councillor Keach.
Keach.
Just keep going.
Councillor Kenison.
Yes.
Councillor Kretovic.
Yes.
Councillor Matson.
Yes.
Councillor Nyan.
Yes.
Councillor Pierce.
Yes.
Councillor Rice Hopkins.
Yes.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
And councillor Werner.
Yes.
Councillor Keach, did you vote?
I did, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that motion is adopted. Uh, okay, that amendment is uh adopted. We're open to further amendment. Uh, councillor Pierce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask that we appropriate uh five thousand dollars uh of the ten thousand dollars uh to uh replenish the parking fund for expanded parking for restaurants for downtown Concord.
Second? I called those, there is a second, okay. Motion made in second. Mr. Spell, do you have an opinion about this?
Couldn't hurt, I guess. Uh, five five thousand dollars, um, I can see it, I could see the the tangent there, but um given the condition of the fund, um, it doesn't hurt.
Okay, uh, let's go with um councillor Fennessey.
Uh, I would suggest maybe taking the remainder of the ten thousand and and making it a ten thousand dollar contribution rather than five thousand if my uh dear friend councillor Pierce would entertain a friendly amendment.
I would support that.
Me as well.
Okay. You're five, five, ten, two, ten, and twenty, sorry. Councillor Nine?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, Mr. Aspel, could you please comment on what is, by the way, this is a tough question for you to answer off the top of your head, ten thousand dollars relative to uh projected lost revenue in the parking fund with those parking spots, uh, how does that match up?
Well, if if you um if you look at um the number of events that go traditionally go on, and particularly, when you think about market days, which is generally two and a half to three full days, because you have to clear the the parking out in advance. Um, that that's a lot of money for the the entire length. And now we're adding, um, you know, we've had a very successful three years of um, even though In-Town isn't directly involved with it, um, the um um cultural arts festival, um, that 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 all adds up significantly in terms of the prime parking spaces in downtown Concord. So I could, so I could see the relationship. So it's probably, I I can't can't tell you if it's if it's the right number, but it certainly is a significant number that the city parking fund forgoes to be able to put on events. It's really, the council's talked about in the past as one of the contributions in terms of of putting on events is foregoing the revenues associated with that with that parking.
Uh, follow up, Your Honor?
Please.
So maybe the way to reframe this question is, my understanding in the parking fund, obviously, we do our our pro forma each year. We have projected revenues and losses depending upon any given year. Obviously, we have um certain projections built into that pro forma for lost revenues associated with um parking spaces not being available. My question would be, at this point, and this is for the the whole group, is that ten thousand dollars better allocated elsewhere, for example, um to make funds available to help businesses in the upcoming months to make outdoor dining more feasible? Can we use that money for something other than parking, which will have a greater economic stimulus in the economy or in the downtown area?
Thank you, Your comments. Uh, councillor champion.
Your Honor, uh, I I sincerely appreciate councillor uh Pierce's concern about the parking fund uh as chairman of the parking committee, uh, and also uh councillor Fennessey's uh as a member of the of the of the count of the committee. I guess I would suggest that I think that surrendering those spaces during the COVID pandemic last summer probably contributed to filling the other uh parking spaces more than they denied revenue to us. Uh, because those uh those surrendered spaces that that which were used for outside dining actually attracted people downtown and uh and and I think contributed to to actually uh increasing our our downtown traffic and therefore increasing downtown parking. Uh, if not on Main Street, certainly on the on the side streets and in the parking garages. Uh, so along the lines of councillor Nyan uh and his thoughts, I would respectfully suggest that that possibly uh there might be uh other uses we could put that ten thousand dollars towards. Uh, eh eh even in in terms of uh in improving the safety, possibly improving the safety or or the attractiveness of the uh spaces which are designated for outside dining in the coming summer. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, I I was gonna bring this up later on, but since I feel like I'm kind of being forced to talk about it now, so if you all bear with me. Uh, one of the things that I have been uh concerned about, and for those of you who have been up and down our Main Street recently, and uh I I compliment the city uh for its being as cooperative and as uh flexible as they possibly could be to work with our restaurants, um, to use those parking spaces, use the sidewalks uh to increase their floor plan as much as they can uh to help those businesses succeed. But I will say that I I have become very concerned with just putting those simple barricades out there. Um, the sawhorses are nice, they're they're visible, but I do not think that they provide the same.
The sawhorses are nice, they're, they're visible, but I do not think that they provide the safety to our diners. And it also takes is one, unfortunately, one person who is not paying attention, maybe looking at their phone, to go off the road and to, then we, we have a, a real bad situation on our hands. I, I'm concerned about, I'm not an insurance guy, but I'm surely concerned about insurance issues. Who's liable? Is it the restaurant? Is it us? So instead of appropriating $10,000 for parking, which I think Counsel Chaplin summed up real well in terms of how I think the parking fund responded last year, I think it would be a lot better use of those funds, much greater return if we ask the city administration to look into what, I'm not going to suggest a way, because there's all kinds of ways. I know that Nashua, for instance, even had a contest for painting jersey barriers. I know that Portsmouth uses different means. Manchester does as well. I just think that we need to think about the safety of the folks downtown from the interaction between people and cars. So I, I would rather not spend the, or appropriate the 10,000 for putting it into the parking fund, which obviously I fully recognize the, the need to do that. And I, and I think that Counsel Pierce is right, but I think there's a higher need right now, and that is the safety of our diners downtown. Maybe we set up a grant program, a matching grant program, but I, I, I just think that I'd like the flexibility to you, give the administration the ability to use those dollars in another way. So I have, now I have Counsel Fennessey, I have Counsel Kennison, I have Counsel Keach.
Counsel Fennessey. Your Honor, so from my perspective, the $10,000 would be more a recognition of the contribution we'd be making this summer to restaurants and businesses downtown by providing those parking spaces and not charging the regular fee that we normally would. I think we're going to see a lot of increased activity and unlike last summer, it's not that there, we are contributing spaces that wouldn't be filled already. I, I fully expect we're going to have a lot of people downtown and so providing those spaces to assist our businesses, which I fully support. But I think this is a, a, a good way to at least recognize some level of reimbursement for that contribution. With respect to the mayor's proposal regarding some sort of equipment, jersey barriers or whatnot, while I'm, I'm, I have my concerns obviously about diner safety downtown. We seemed to do okay last summer. And I have some significant concerns about setting up concrete jersey barriers all around our downtown. I don't think that will do much to enhance the aesthetics of our Main Street at this point.
Thank you. Counsel Keach?
Two points. One, I think the safety is my first concern. I think there are some legitimate concerns about that. But the second part is aesthetics, and I think there are some creative ways to deal with that and make it look a little better than it is. But I, I, I do share your concern about the safety issue. But I, I also agree with you that outdoor dining is very important, not just for the pandemic, but going forward, I think that's just a thing that's going to continue.
Thank you very much. Counsel Kennison?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are we anticipating post-COVID that these spaces would be given up forever during the summer for outdoor dining? I think originally it was to help out businesses because of the COVID. So my question is, what are we anticipating in the future? I just, I'm really not understanding that. And, you know, one thing, you know, like at, at the works, we have that built out area where it's, they have the advantage of doing that. And I would throw out there some, maybe a far-fetched idea that we create that kind of space, remove those parking spaces permanently and create that kind of space in front of some of these places that want outdoor dining. It'd be very expensive, but I throw that out there as kind of a thinking out of the box suggestion.
I think Counsel Kennison, you raised a really important point, and that's the discussion we have to have in the future, because I think it's unknown as to what, what we are going to look like and what, what the demand and need is going to be. So I think you're spot on with your question going forward.
Counsel Credit?
Thanks, the cat just got me. I, I really appreciate you bringing up the jersey barriers, because I just posted it on my Facebook last week, because someone shared it with me, what they did in Nashua, and it just totally escaped my mind. Must be a Monday or something. What a great idea. And one of the people that responded to that post has an opportunity for place-making grants, and this could be an opportunity to do a match fund for that, to really do something cool in the downtown. And I would recommend everybody look at what Nashua did, because, Mayor, you are right on point. It is cool, the jersey barriers become something that aren't ugly, but a fascinating eye attraction in the downtown. And Counsel Kennison, you're right, it adds such vibrancy to the downtown to see all these people enjoying the space. And we can't use it more to be out around other people in, in, for such a long time, we've been hooped up all winter because of pandemic. I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, 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 I thank Counsel Pierce for starting this, because it's turned into a very interesting conversation, and I thank him for his motion. And I also thank him for the sentiment behind it. But I kind of lean toward what Counsel Chaplin said, who's chair of the parking committee, that until we really, I'd like to have a quantification, a better adding up of exactly what the costs are that we're talking about in terms of the lost revenue before we just sort of throw $5,000 or $10,000 back into the parking fund, much as I wouldn't mind doing that. But I think that we've had a discussion tonight that showed that perhaps there is a better immediate, more immediate need. And certainly in terms of the safety, as Your Honor brought up, I think that's paramount. And I'd like to see, see the funds move toward that direction. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no other hands raised, we do have a motion that's been seconded to appropriate $10,000 from what was originally within In-Town Concord to move that to the parking fund. We all clear on the question? I think Counsel Pierce does have his hand up. I, you know, I apologize. Your hand blends in with the screen behind you. I apologize. Counsel Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a great discussion. At, at the risk of going forward with a vote, I, I, I get the, I get a sense, the consensus of the council is to look more into this. So I'd be willing to withdraw my motion if Counsel Fennessey is willing to withdraw his second and then discuss this further.
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I got to confess to you, I'm trying to chart this out. I, I think Counsel Kennison, you seconded the 5,000. Counsel Fennessey, I do not hear you withdrawing the 10,000 motion. So I think we still have a motion for the 10,000.
I don't think, I don't think mine was actually adopted, but that's fine. I'm happy to withdraw.
Okay, no, I, I do, it wasn't adopted. I think, well, the way I heard it was, you made, it was seconded and motion made seconded, so it was pending, that's all. But if you were drawing it, then it's no longer pending. Okay, well, then that leaves us with $10,000. It obviously goes back to money not being spent. And that, we actually concluded with item 38. So other further business, I guess, further, further business, I, I would just raise for your consideration whether or not we want to ask the manager to evaluate if there are safer, have his team look at it, whether or not there are safer ways to, to protect pedestrians being so close to the street while dining, and let us know what he comes back with.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. Ms. Manager, do you have any, since we're tasking you with this, do you have any concerns or thoughts?
I'm looking forward to it.
If you need $10,000, let us know.
I'm not making the motion.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further, Counsel Fennessey?
I just want to make one comment, sort of going back to the question about the parking fund and people asking where we are with respect to the parking fund. As I'm sure you all remember, we got a report from the Deputy Financial Manager showing that the parking fund's about half a million dollars behind at the moment. So I think we've got that information and I would suggest we want, I want to take a look at efforts to fix that issue.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none further. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please?
Counsel Bouchar.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin.
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey.
No.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
No.
Counsel Kennison.
Yes.
Counsel Credit.
Yes.
Counsel Mountson.
Yes.
Counsel Nahan.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
No.
Counsel Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
And Counsel Werner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Okay, we have no unfinished business. Do we have any comments or requests by counselors? Counsel Bouchar.
May I protect? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a big thank you to the Concord Fire Department. There was a house fire in my neighborhood Saturday night and the many fire trucks and ambulances, and they were all very quiet, because most of the neighborhood didn't even know they were there. But it was quite a major fire. The family got out safely and the family had nothing but just brave, brave comments for our Concord firefighters and our EMTs that came to put out this house fire, which could have been a total loss for the homeowners and also spread to this densely populated wooded neighborhood. So I just want the Concord firefighters to know how appreciative the family is and, and the neighborhood is for their, their tremendous professional response to that fire. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Who else? Anyone else? Counsel Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, I just want to thank Matt Walsh, Carlos, by Heather Shank and others on city staff for their diligent work to help create the plan that we passed with regard to the development of Whitney Road tonight. It's a ton of work and this is a huge project, and I think it's going to be an important asset to the Pennequik community and the city of Concord as a whole. And, you know, it's, it's really great to have an A-team working for Concord to be able to get all this work done. And so many things in a, in a huge plan like this can go wrong. And it's amazing when you have a great team like this, how everything goes right. So I also just want to give a, a thanks to the developers, David and Lori Rosio, because throughout this, they have their thoughtfulness in planning the development, and especially their consistent and extensive engagement with the community throughout the planning process of the shopping center. So I just, a couple of quick thank yous on that, and I'm really looking forward to the project moving forward. Thanks.
Now seeing anyone else? Ms. Manager, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel Keach, you had your hand raised?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Manager, you say you didn't have anything? I apologize. I meant to add one more item under new business before we got to the consent agenda. I'd like to move a motion for your consideration. This would be a referral to the Community Development Department to evaluate zoning ordinance amendments relative to the institutional zoning in Concord in the vicinity of Pennequik Street and Rumford Street?
Second. Make that motion second.
Motion made and seconded by?
Bouchar. Krkovic.
Sorry, Credit. Counsel Credit. I thank you, and I appreciate the, your consideration of this. I want to move this to pass it on to the administration to really evaluate it. What I'm concerned about most is where, after we come out of the pandemic, we're going to be looking at a commercial space and proximity to highways, infrastructure like water, sewer, and, and so that we're prepared for when we move forward. We'll be able to put things in the most appropriate places. So with that, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Counsel Bouchar.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin.
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey.
No.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield.
Yes.
Counsel Keach. Counsel Keach. Counsel Kennison. Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Kennison.
Yes.
Counsel Credit.
Yes.
Counsel Mountson.
Yes.
Counsel Nahan.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
And Counsel Werner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, the Texas two are consideration of the items that's pulled from the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read item 18, please?
Yes, it's a report from the Deputy City Manager of Development recommending the city manager be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Liberty Utilities and the Neutrals Preservation Alliance toward the preservation of the former Gas Holder Building, and it was pulled from consent by Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you very much. I'll just simply note before the discussion begins, the Counsel Chaplin is he is using Rule 6A.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'm recusing myself, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, we'll recognize Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions, which I'm going to start by directing to the Deputy City Manager. There's some references in the memorandum of understanding with respect to the city considering contributing staff time and expertise to the project. Has there been any discussion with the other parties to the memorandum of understanding with respect to the level of involvement that's being requested from the city? And, and the nature of it?
Thank you, thank you, Counsel, for the question. So the, the, the different parties, the Neutrals Preservation Alliance and Liberty Utilities in the city have been working, actually making quite a bit of progress over the last several months. If counsel recall, back in January, you accepted the report from their consultant, which basically, one of the recommendations, the first one was to work towards a memorandum of understanding, which is presented to you this evening. And the city is already, our city staff's already been working. There's been a considerable investment of staff time amongst many of us, the city solicitor, Matt Walsh, myself, even a number of people, to make sure that we provided enough information.
Move me. Talk to you later.
That we have to, that we have at our, at our fingertips more easily than these other entities. We've also helped coordinate activities throughout. So it's been, I, I think from, from our perspective, I think it's been productive. I don't believe we feel yet that we're in a position where we've been overly burdened with those requests. Some, there has been, as part of any negotiation, there's always requests for things that are a little bit beyond the pale, for example. And so we've had some good discussions back and forth, and I think we're at a point now where we're pretty comfortable where we are. And the recommendations that are in here ongoing in terms of those staff contributions would be something I think we can manage pretty effectively.
Follow up, Your Honor?
Please.
Do you have any sense of what the expectation would be moving forward with respect to the contribution of city staff? And do we have the bandwidth to provide that level of involvement moving forward with respect to the project?
So currently, the Preservation Alliance and Liberty Utilities are working on a, what we call the Phase One Agreement. And the city has a very limited role in that particular agreement. So our staff So our staff time at this point is really just setting up weekly meetings. I also spend a second meeting every week with the head of the Preservation Alliance just to kind of debrief and make sure that we understand all the issues that are salient for that particular week. They're doing the bulk of the work right now as part of Phase One and that's what we would anticipate because the Preservation Alliance has a donor that's contributing up to $500,000 and Liberty Utilities has committed to match that donation up to a certain point to make the Phase One, the stabilization of the building priority right now as part of Phase One. So in the foreseeable future, the contribution of staff time is manageable at this point. I think once they get to Phase Two, that's a different discussion. That's why these points are here as part of the city's sort of expectation. You know, the city shall consider certain things potentially and those things have yet to be defined.
My next question, I'm not sure if it's properly for you, Carlos, or for the city manager, but assuming that at some point in time, one of the parties to the memorandum of understanding requested a higher level of city involvement or contribution of staff time to the project. The memorandum of understanding anticipates that we have discretion whether or not to provide some level of expertise. Is that an issue that would have to come back to the council or does the city manager believe that he can exercise the discretion anticipated under the memorandum of understanding? I'll answer that. So I have the discretion to answer that and the as I would see it, as long as I thought Mr. Baia could or other members of the staff, because there's several others of staff that could be involved, can diligently get their work done, then it would be fine. If I thought that it was going to impact other initiatives that were important priorities for the city council, then I'd come to the city council and say, this is what the situation is. This is what I determine the priorities to be. Do you agree? And then I think I could receive direction from you about whether or not to reprioritize the, you know, the work effort or to seek additional resources. Thank you for that. I have a couple of questions that are probably better directed towards the city solicitor, sort of with respect to the legal aspects of the agreement and the potential exposure. I know we've talked a little bit about, you know, wanting to avoid to get in the chain of title because of the potential exposure there could be to an entity that ends up owning this property. Have we, I noticed in the agreement itself, there's some language that suggests that Liberty will endeavor to sort of limit the potential exposure for the contamination on site for a future owner of the property. Have we done an analysis of whether that's even possible? And to what extent we could potentially have exposure in the future if we were to get in the chain of title even for, you know, a short period of time?
Yes, we have done that analysis and the chain of title is something that the city, at least administratively, is not considering. But yes, we have conducted that review.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, Counsel Kretovic, can we recognize for a motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve this item.
Second.
Okay, the motion is accepted. This report authorizes the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding. Motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I did have one comment, Your Honor, if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
Having sat with the committee with Liberty Utilities, Counselor Chaplin, Counselor Todd, Counselor Kennison, Counselor Warner. Liberty Utilities has come a mile from where we began and I have to say that, you know, sometimes you like leave a meeting and you go, did you really say that? And so many times I felt for myself, I was so hard on them because they were so aggressively against saving this treasure that we have in our community and just didn't seem to pay attention to it. That was then. Where we are now, the fact that they've come forward and said that they want to help, they understand that the community sees this as an asset and it's beyond our community. We have someone that has stepped up and donated $500,000, $500,000, half a million dollars to help save this building and Liberty Utilities recognizes that and goes, you know what? That really is important. We're getting letters from people all across the country to save this. This is in our hands. This is in our hands to save. When we look at 60 years ago, when we took down the train station filled with rats, it was not something we should have saved. Our leaders at the time made a decision, but here we are on the precipice of another building that we could lose that is such a treasure to this community. I'm applauding Liberty Utilities for stepping up and the committee, all the work that they've done to get us to this point and super congratulations to our city staff for having the wherewithal to see this is what the community wants. And so I wholeheartedly support this motion and moving forward to have our further discussions on this memorandum of understanding. And I apologize for being on a soapbox, but I'll tell you, you know what? I don't want 10 years from now someone to go, well, you know, you lost the gas house too. That is not the place that I want to be in our community to lose such important historic treasures.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry.
Counsel Hatfield?
Counsel.
Counsel Hatfield, I can't really hear you.
If you want to call on Counselor Fantasy and I'll get my phone on.
Okay, Counselor Fantasy.
Sure. Thank you. I was just going to say, I'm going to support the motion from Counselor Kretovic. However, I think it's important for us to continue to be vigilant as this process develops. While I'm happy to hear that Liberty is willing to contribute, I think it's very important that we need to make sure that they continue to meet those obligations in the future. Having a commitment from them to pay for a portion of Phase One is great, but we're going to need to have a cap in place forever for all time and that's their responsibility. So if upkeep needs to take place, that's something that they should be on the hook for moving forward, going beyond just Phase One. And I don't think we should lose sight of that. We should not, at any point as a city, take on any other responsibility associated with the contamination and pollution that was done by their predecessors and interests.
Thank you. Counsel Hatfield?
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. I think Counselor Fantasy raises some important points. But I wanted to thank Counselor Kretovic and the committee. I thought you could do it and I think it's very exciting that you did. And kudos to you. You're amazing. So this is exciting. There's still, I understand, a lot more work to do, but it seems like we're on a great path. So thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion before us. It's been seconded. Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just very briefly, also, while we're thanking people, I just want to give a shout out to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, who has also put in a ton of time and expertise in making this happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing anyone else? Okay. We have a motion pending before us. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin, you're taking Rule 6A. Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And did Counselor Keach come back? No. Okay.
He's gone. Thank you. I'm on the meeting.
Okay. With that, the motion is adopted. Can I get a motion to suspend the rolls and take up consideration of suspense items one, two, three, and four? So moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded to take up consideration of suspense items. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, motions ruled. Madam Clerk, if you would mind, just suspense one, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant for up to $8,425 with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics for the purpose of updating the stormwater pollution prevention plan at the Concord Municipal Airport.
Thank you very much. We get a motion.
Moved. Moved.
Move to authorize, measure to apply for the grants. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, suspense two, which would be an item table for the May 10th, 2021 public hearing?
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $13,000 for operations and maintenance of the Concord Municipal Airport and accepting the sum of $13,000 in Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act funding as administered by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the settlement for, to be tabled for the May 10th public hearing. I'll read the question. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item suspense three, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the John Flatley Company concerning the sale and redevelopment of city-owned real estate located at 32-34 South Main Street and 33 South Street, known as the former New Hampshire Employment Security property, scheduled also to be set for a May public hearing.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the settlement for a May 10th public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item suspense four, please.
Also to be set for a May public hearing, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $372,500 for hazardous building materials abatement at the former New Hampshire Employment Security property located at 32-34 South Main Street, authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept the sum of $172,500 from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Brownfields Program and authorizing the use of $200,000 in economic development reserve funds for this purpose.
Move approval?
Motion made seconded to approve the settlement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. This is to our end of the meeting tonight, but before we leave, I was want to recognize Counselor Hatfield, do you have anything you want to share with us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. This is my last meeting. I unfortunately have to resign from the city council because I am moving out of this fair city. I want to thank you all for your kindness. It's been amazing to serve with you. It's been a privilege to represent Ward Four. I've learned so much and as at least one of you said, I was just getting the hang of it. So I'm very sorry to leave so soon and I wish you all well, particularly in these extremely challenging times. But it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm here to serve with you as well.
You've been a great thoughtful member of this body.
Believe missed.
Anyone else? So I'm going to call you Meredith. I always call you Counselor, but tonight I'm calling you Meredith. I tell you, it's been a real joy to serve with you. I've served with a lot of folks and you have made this council so much better over your time here. The quality of your questions, the insightfulness you have to the issues, the way you represent your constituents. They were really lucky to have you and we, the city council, we were really lucky to have you as well. So you are always welcome here. This is your home and I really want you to know you're going to be missed greatly.
Thank you.
So I voted no on her resignation, just so you know.
I'll second the no.
So Madam Clerk, with that, could you talk to us real briefly or should I just go ahead? We're going to need, our city charter says that we need to fill that vacancy and conferring with our city clerk and with our city solicitor, it's a recommendation that we set the date of July 13th, 2021 to hold a special election to fill the vacancy in Ward Four council seat. And this vacancy will fill the term that expires on December 31st, 2021. The suggested date of July 13th, 2021 will allow sufficient time for the advertisement of the required special 10-day filing period. It will take place April 30th, 2021 through May 10th, 2021. And then giving a sufficient time for printing and issuance of both the regular and absentee ballots. So if somebody would like to make that a motion, and Madam Clerk, before we do that, did I get that all right?
You did a great job. It was perfect. Yes.
Okay. Somebody would like to make a motion to do that?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I apologize.
Counselor Fantasy.
Got it. Thank you. Counselor Fantasy, seconded. So with that, again, that would be a special election for July 13th. Signups would be between April 30th and May 10th. Any questions? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
That, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor Pierce. I have a question.
Sure.
Did we vote earlier on sealing the minutes from the non-public session?
We did not.
Should we?
How about when we're done with this?
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Not here. Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Um, reluctantly. Um, Counsel Pierce?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we seal the minutes of the non-public session.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded to seal the minutes, um, from earlier's non-public session. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bushard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, the motion is adopted. Um, anyone else have, uh, anything to come before the council, before we adjourn? All right, Counselor Hatfields, would like to make what motion?
Move readjourn.
Second.
Second.
Goodbye, everyone.
Goodbye, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk. One last time.
Counselor Bushard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yeah.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Aye.
With that, the motion is adopted. Everyone have a wonderful week. Meredith, you'll be missed. Bye, Meredith.